Sixteen and enter your data. I'd like to introduce the board as we are kicking off. We start with Sophie.
Sure, Sophie Saltynstall.
Good evening, Jennifer Scrafford.
Kate Davis.
Eric Herring.
Ken Otto.
Thank you, Ken. To my name is Dave Emanuel. I serve as your school district moderator. Beth Dupell is my assistant moderator. Deb Bakie is here as our clerk. And school district staff, if you'd like to introduce yourselves, you're more than welcome to. We have some key players. Thank you for joining us tonight. Your option.
Kate Lucas, all of us, thank you guys so much for coming.
Assistant Superintendent.
I'm Molly O'Keefe, the director of findings.
Director of special operations.
Kate Belander, assistant principal.
You speak up a little louder.
Kate Belander, assistant principal.
Thank you, Kate. Anybody else in the room? The supervisors of the checklist are outside still checking people in. We can work with them in a little bit. Before we get to our formal business tonight, Jennifer Scrafford.
Yeah, yeah, so thanks so much for coming. Tonight, we wanted to do a quick recognition of our chair, Kate Davis, who has, this is going to be her last meeting, but we are so grateful for her leadership and her strength and her commitment, and we wanted to recognize her tonight. So I hope you'll join me in saying thank you for all of her volunteer efforts.
Thank you.
It's been nice, Kate. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I wanted to review the rules of conduct for this evening's meeting, just so we're all on the same page. This meeting, I am glad that everyone's with us tonight. Thank you for joining us. Rule number one, the moderator makes the rules. You got that one? Everything else will go smoothly. The New Hampshire state laws task the town or school district moderator with establishing the rules of conduct for this evening's meeting. If there are any questions, please refer to rule number one. Number two, only registered Stratum voters are permitted to participate in this evening's meeting's proceedings. I invite non-registered voters to join me in the front of the room, in the front, well, we get a full house tonight. If you're not a registered voter, I'm going to ask you to, do we have any non-registered voters in the room other than staff? I know I've got my staff and I've got my eyes on, I've got my eyes on you guys. Okay. Rule number three, voters should have checked in at the supervisors as the checklist and received their color voter card upon entry to the room. If you don't have your card, please go to the hallway, get your card. The meeting will be conducted, rule number four, tonight's meeting will be conducted in an orderly fashion, using simple parliamentary procedure to govern the questions, discussions, and voting. Each article of business will have a motion supported by a second, questions, a discussion, and a vote. I will do my absolute best to make sure that everybody knows exactly what we're doing through all parts of this evening's proceedings. Number five, any and all speakers must be recognized by the moderator. Speaking and voting at this meeting is only afforded to registered voters unless the opportunity to speak by a non-registered voter is requested and permitted by the moderator. Voters wishing to ask a question, make a statement, or make a statement should approach the mic on the floor before us and state your full name and address for the clerk. Speakers should form a queue at this microphone if you would like to speak, so the House does not need to wait for people to get up and work their way around the room. If you would like to speak tonight, I am inviting you to queue up at the microphone. If we have a tremendous amount of turnout for people who would like to speak, I may ask for a for and against line. I will make it clear, if you'd like to speak, I'm inviting you to come to the microphone when the article is up. It will help us expedite business, and I'm trying to be respectful of everyone's time because I do appreciate you joining us tonight. Please pose all questions and direct all comments to me, the moderator. I will seek an answer or I will find a response. I do, I will not permit a running debate between speakers on the floor, and all communications will go through the chair. Does everyone understand? I will ask you to stop nicely the first time. You're going to speak, you're speaking to me, and we'll work from there. Please limit your questions to one question at a time, so we can answer the questions effectively, so everyone in the House knows what we're working on. If you have a follow-up question, you, I would appreciate it if you say, may I follow up? Because if there's 10 people in line, we may say, I may say, no, we're going to let the next person ask their question next, again, being respectful of everyone's time. Debate and comments should be germane to the subject article and to the point, preferably under three minutes. And this is the school district meeting, not the town meeting, so tonight's presentations and discussion and questions should be focused on the articles before us at tonight's school district meeting. Amendments to an article cannot change the subject matter or purpose of the article. They should be made in legible writing and seconded by a registered voter. If a voter has a question or would like assistance in wording an amendment, please see either me or Beth, and we are happy to assist you to make sure that the intent of what you're trying to do will work best for all of us. Amendments will only be accepted one at a time to avoid confusion, and we'll resolve each amendment with a vote before we go to the next order or item of business. Once all the proposed amendments have been voted on, the meeting will resume and will vote on the article before us, either amended or as presented. If a voter chooses to move the question to end debate, voters who are in line to speak at the microphone, I will allow them to speak. Then I will entertain a motion to end debate. And it's my intent to hear people's voice, that's the intent of this meeting. And rule number eight, a secret ballot may be requested for any article at any time during the discussion of that business by a written request and signature of at least five registered voters. So if we want to do a ballot vote, we can call one anytime. I just, I need a, I need a signature of the person who makes the motion, and I need five signatures, that's the bottom line. A motion to restrict reconsideration is a mechanism to limit opportunities to reintroduce business that's already been voted on during tonight's meeting. In the event that a motion to reconsider is made after we've restricted reconsideration, the article will not be heard, or again, tonight, and will be rescheduled for a time and date certain, at least seven days from tonight. Last, rule number 10, the moderator may be overruled with a simple majority vote of the House. So if I'm messing it up, it's your job to call me on it and make sure that we are all doing the right thing. Is that fair? Pretty fair. Hey, I've grown up in Stratum, I've been attending town meetings and school district meetings since I was an elementary school kid in the Cub Scouts. I believe that this is the purest form of democracy in our country, and I ask people that they respect everyone's rights in the room and treat people the way that we have in the town of Stratum for the past 300 years. This is where I grew up, I'm proud to be part of this process, and I am grateful that you've chosen to join us this evening. Can I answer any questions on the rules and procedures for this evening's meeting? Seeing none, I would like to kick off tonight's next formal part with a presentation by the school board. Kate, would you?
Yes, thank you so much.
Kate Lucas, are you in on this also?
She's going to.
Does anyone have any objections to our elementary school principal joining the chairperson of the school board and making this evening's informational presentation? Seeing none, thank you, Kate.
Okay, great.
Yeah, take it away, Kate.
Kate has, is going to take the first part of the presentation, and I'll do the second part, so take it away.
Thank you for coming. We decided to take a little bit of a different approach on our presentation to the community tonight. We work really hard to create or paint the picture or the narrative of what happens at Stratum Memorial School for the public at these meetings, and typically that is through anecdotal stories of our students and their learning experiences. And then this year, one of the things that sort of has come to our attention is there seems to be a lot of misinformation or inaccurate information, and that's not anybody's fault, but data is always a couple of years behind. So we know that our testing data from 2021 was what was being talked about, and we really felt like it was important to talk about and explain how our budgets are shaped based on our student data. So a number of years ago, about three years ago now, this particular board charged this administration with analyzing our data in a more comprehensive and complex way, so that we could really target instruction and intervention to the students of Stratum. We were coming out of COVID, and we were facing some different times, and our data looked really different, and the learning experience of kids was shaped by things that were far out of their control and certainly out of ours. And so for the last three years, we've been working really hard to fine-tune our instruction based on student data. So that's a little bit of the first few slides that we're going to talk about tonight, or I'm going to talk about tonight, maybe. So this is from the New Hampshire Department of Ed website, you all have access to this as residents of Stratum. The data that I realize is very hard for you to see right now, and I'm sorry, so I will walk you through this data. So this page is right from the DOE, it is the data from 2023. At the very top of this, it talks about the top 25% of schools in New Hampshire, the middle 50%, and the lower 25%. And then there are a variety of areas in which we were rated as a school and as a district. And so you'll see here for student achievement, our ELA, which is literacy, is 68%, our mathematics is 64%, and science at 47%. I would also mention that makes us in the top 25% of elementary schools in New Hampshire. The second part of that is educator profiles, which talks about average teacher salary as well as certified staff and highly qualified staff. And again, we're in the top 25% as well as educator experience. You'll see that we're in the lower 25% for educators on an intern path, and that simply means we have a very low percentage of teachers that are not already certified or are working under a provisional license. The last column on the right talks about discipline, so in-school and out-of-school suspensions, which we do not have at this elementary school. And then at the bottom is cost per pupil, and we'll talk a little bit further about that as we go to the next slides. So again, this is the same data from the first slide, just blown up bigger for you so you can see it back there, but also to talk about the fact that we exceeded the target that the state of New Hampshire had set for us in both literacy and mathematics last This is a comparison of Stratum into the state, so the state is green, which is over here on the left, so, and then Stratum is all the way over here on the yellow, again, showing the work that we've done from the data that you guys saw in the public from 2021 to the data from last year, there was significant growth for all of our students across all domains. This is the snapshot of the years I was talking about, the years you were just viewing was 2023. This is the snapshot that shows what I was talking about from 2021 to 2023, so you can see the three-year growth at our, for our students. And then cost per pupil, this has been brought up a couple of times, and we thought it was really important to show this to everyone coming tonight. So for us, from 21 to 23, we're pretty stagnant, within about $1,000 cost per pupil, whereas the state has gone up every year, and we're closing that gap, so we're much closer to the state average than we were three years ago. And part of that has been the work that we've done with the board around fiscal responsibility, and really looking at our budget and finding the areas that we can reduce in order to support the areas that we need, and that would be analyzing that student data and providing the staff that can provide intervention. So I feel like this is a representation of alignment with the board goals, as well as what we want for our students. Quickly, the story, here are some of the things that we have done over the last couple of years in response to student data. We've adopted a different phonics program, we've updated our handwriting program, we've added the addition of a literacy specialist and a math specialist, who serve dual roles in our building. We are fortunate that they can work with our students, spend a good day, part of their day, working with our students that need intervention, but then they can also spend part of their day coaching our staff and building capacity within the building, which we know then has a larger impact on the whole student population. We have increased the number of staff that we have in our social-emotional programs, so school guidance. We currently have two school counselors and a social worker, where three years ago, we had 1.6 school counselors. We're still a little bit under what the recommendation is from the School Counseling Association, but we're pretty close. And then the biggest piece, and I think most reflected in our budget for FY25, is our multi-tiered system of support. This system is the way we are analyzing our data comprehensively. There are some schools that have this position that does this specifically for behavior data. There are some schools that have this person that does this for literacy or math. We are really building a comprehensive system that looks at academics, it looks at behavioral data, it looks at social-emotional learning data and student achievement, and really creates the whole child approach that we work so hard to achieve at Stratum. Our enrollment since 1718, outside of the COVID year, has been pretty consistent. The board did commission, the New Hampshire School Board Association, to complete an enrollment study, which projects out 10 years, so that has been done and is available on the SAU and the SMS website for anybody that wants to know the projections for the future. We are currently about 54% male and 46% female for our student population. We have very little ethnical and racial diversity, and currently, we have about 18% of our students who are identified and receive services through special ed. Everywhere we try to put in a slide that identifies the driving factors for our proposed budget, and this year, these were the things, I've mentioned them already, so the multi-tiered system of support coordinator, which if you have a budget in front of you, it's under Curriculum Assessment 2212. The school board has been tirelessly working on maintaining this facility, it's 35 years old. In 1819, we found out that the ductwork at SMS had never been cleaned in the 30 years it had been open, so there was a large investment in doing the entire system, and the advice that we've been given through the companies that did it and through our architectural firm is that rather than do it all one time again, because it's a large substantial amount, you can start putting it on a rotation, and you do about a fifth of the building every year, and then it becomes on a five-year rotation, so that's what we've started. Our insurance, GMR, which is, that's the maximum that our insurance will go up, they have to set that rate for us so that we know how to budget, is 9.9%, and these are not things that we get to negotiate or have any impact on, they're set for us, and then we have to build them into our budget. And then dental was up 4.7%. I would mention that last year, insurance was 15.49, about 15 and a half percent, so that's two years in a row with a substantial increase in the GMR for health insurance. The next item is the police details. As everyone knows, SAU 16, as well as Stratum Memorial School, takes the safety and security of our buildings, our student and our staff, very seriously. We often hear from Homeland Security and other organizations, the excellence in the job that we do. And SMS, as their next step, was putting in police details. I met with Chief King a couple of times, and this would provide opportunities for random police details and a police presence at school to ensure the safety of everyone. Provisions for retirement went up because we, as you know, we have to predict for that, it's part of the contract that they can retire, and then we have a retirement buyout, and this is based on not actuals, because we don't know, their contract tells us when they're going to retire, and that's not until January 15th of 2025, if they were going to retire next year. But you have to make some provisions, assuming there will be, and you base that on what they've told you, or what their ages is, or have they met with central office about retirement. And then the last piece is simply just the salaries. So we have our Stratum Teachers Association, and our Stratum Educational Support Professionals are in contracts, and this is separate warrant articles that were voted on by the town three years ago and two years ago, and so these are the factors that influence or the largest driving factors for the FY25 proposed budget. At this time, that ends my presentation.
Good evening, thank you all for coming. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the process of how we got here to the proposed budget for the 2025 year. So the board beats with the fact, which is the Financial Advisory Committee, several times, and I'll go over that. So in December, we met with them twice, and the fact makes up of three community members that sit with the board and go through the budget, and ask questions, and, you know, we look at everything, and the impact of the taxes, and what's best for the students. So we met twice in December, we had a public hearing in January, heard from the public, went back, met again with the fact at the end of January. The board decided that we really needed to have another meeting, because we were hearing that people weren't happy. So we went back, took another look at the budget, and trimmed it down as much as we thought we could without impacting learning. So, do you want to go to the next slide? Yeah. So just to go over. There it is, thank you. So the current budget for fiscal year '24 is $14,778,318. And so the highlight budget changes, so looking at the two years between fiscal year '24 and fiscal year '25, the big changes were the MTSS coordinator, which Kate spoke to, that's a $93,000 addition to the budget, but also looking at the amount we spent last year, was about $25,000 in consultation fees and about $10,000 in extended school year coordination. So the change between the two years would be about $58,000. Provisions for retirement, as Kate just spoke to, facilities, and then we did have a reduction in technology, hardware, and software. So looking at the proposed budget for 2025, it would be $15,385,249. That's a difference of 600 and 6,931, so that would be a 4.11% increase. So looking at the tax impact, it would be 38 cents per thousand, so an example of a $500,000 house in Stratum, it'd be a $190 increase. I know this is hard to see for everybody, but this, we felt that this really illustrated the makeup of the budget. It's a good visual to show and understand that we're really bound by the contracted services and things we need to run the school well. Thank you. This slide is a breakdown between last year and this year, so you can see on the left is the expense type, and then you can see the 2023-24 budget, next to that's the 24-25 proposed budget with a change in dollar amount, and then all the way on the right would be the percent change. And Dave, did you want me to hold questions until, okay. So I'll go on and just review the other warrant articles now, since I'm here, and then we'll pass it back over to Dave. Okay, great. So the next three warrant articles are coming from unencumbered funds, so they're not raised through taxes, but I just wanted to kind of explain them each a little bit to everybody so they knew what it was for. So maintenance capital reserve fund, we're looking to add about $20,000. This is a 35-year-old building, and there are always unexpected things that could come up, so we kind of want to bolster that amount, so that if things do fail, we are prepared. The special education expense trust fund, we're looking to add $10,000 to that. The reasoning for that is that if we added the $10,000, that would bring us around $500,000, which is the amount we would need if we needed to send two students out of district. And last is the technology trust fund, and that would be a $10,000 increase, so coming, or not an increase, but we're looking to add $10,000 to that. So an example of why we would use something like this was when we came out of COVID, we had a ton of Chromebooks that were broken and damaged, and it was a big expense all at once. So by putting this money in a trust fund, it would kind of help these bubble situations of needing funds to come up and not have to put them directly into the budget. We also, every five to six years, replace wiring and access points, and this is a recommendation coming across all of SAU 16. So those are the other warrants. So thank you. Thanks, Kate.
Thank you, Kate. Thank you, Kate. Kate and Kate. I know. So our first order of business to take up tonight is Article One, the operating budget. Shall the Stratum School District vote to raise and appropriate the amount of $15,385,249 for the support of schools, for the payment of salaries of school district officials and agents, and for the payment of statutory obligations of the district? This article does not include appropriations contained in special or individual articles addressed separately. The Stratum School Board recommends this appropriation, and a majority vote is required. So at this point, I have read Article One, we are talking about the operating budget, and if anyone would like to ask a question or speak on the operating budget, please approach the microphone and state your name, and we'll kick off with Pat.
Pat Abramey, Nine Tallpines Drive, hello, everybody. So let me start by, I'm going to be moving an amendment, but understand that, Mr. Moderator, all of us in this room understand that, that parents are, I gotta put my glasses on if I should have done that first. Okay, all of us in the room understand that, as parents, our number-one responsibility is to ensure that our children are properly educated to become productive members of society. And as a parent, I instill the importance of education in my children, as do all those citizens of Stratum who came together to help create this amendment that I'm going to be moving in just a moment. A discussion of the effective use of resources must be had. As a legislative body, which is all of you, you are the legislative body of the town and as well as the SMS school, this is the forum to have this discussion. So, Mr. Moderator, I move an amendment to warrant Article One, and would like to speak to my motion after it is seconded.
I second it.
Sorry, I don't want to say you're out of order, but Pat's got to make the motion before you second it.
Oh, do you want me to read it? I thought you were going to read the motion. Do you want me to read the motion?
I'd like you to read your amendment.
Oh, that's what I mean, the amendment.
Please.
Okay, amendment to warrant Article One, operating budget. Replace to raise and appropriate the amount of $15,385,249 with to raise and appropriate the amount of $15,221,286. Basically, a reduction of around $163,000. That wasn't part of the motion, that last statement.
Nope, I understand. I have, the amendment that I heard was to replace to raise and appropriate the amount of $15,385,249,000 with to raise and appropriate the amount of $15,221,286,000.
Yes, yes, sir.
And a second would be appropriate. Beautiful, thank you. Okay, now we have, we have an amendment before us that has been seconded. Pat, would you like to speak on your amendment?
Yes, and I probably need more than three minutes, Mr. Moderator, is that okay?
I know that you'll do your best, Pat.
I know. So look, most of us, I'm gonna, I was going to read this, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to explain, and I think that the chair already expressed the board's feeling that they got a sense from the town that after, after tax increases on the school side of 18.6% over the last two, two years, the town was looking for a little breather. I handed out to the board my analysis of that. The state school, the, the, part of the, of the, of the tax, the statewide property tax, actually went down in those two years, 1.1%. The town tax was flat in those two years, and the county tax went up 4.9%, but it's such a tiny part of that problem, part of that was because they have always been pretty flat, but they needed to hire more nurses, they had to increase salaries to get, because we owned that nursing home, and it was only 50% occupied because there were enough staff to cover it. So that's the reason that went up. But, so, so, I researched what the problem was, it wasn't in the town, it wasn't anywhere else, it was in the schools. And of course, that number includes the co-op, and the co-op numbers went up as well. A group of concerned citizens called me, as that most people do, and asked me to help. And I did three things. I went through the budget with a fine-tooth comb, I went to the public meeting where there was public comment on the budget, I asked many questions, along with others, and by the way, there were only about 10 to 12 people there that day that weren't board members, and we expressed ourselves. day that weren't board members. And we expressed ourselves. And then I followed that up, as I always do, as a courtesy. I had a meeting with the principal and the assistant superintendent to further discuss especially the MTSS coordinator position. So I think I did my homework. And I concluded that we could get to, for, for the local schools, a 2% tax increase only, down from about a 4% tax increase. So how do we do that? And I handed to the, to the board and to the members of the school that are represented here, a chart. And, and the bottom line is, after we presented to the, the school board, after we asked our question to the school board, I said, even said in that meeting, it'd be great if we get this down to 2%. They did, they did come through in term, in part. They reduced the budget by 76,000. And all we're asking here now is to reduce it another 163, 163,000 and change. 163,963. And part of that is going to be in the MTS coordinator. We are going to suggest that, and I'm going to explain in more detail in a minute, but we're going to suggest that that be put on hold for this year to continue to research that. What wasn't said in the presentation just now was that, what was missing was the benefits. I didn't see benefits up there. And benefits, and I was, I was generous by saying that the average benefit package here is 48.4% of salary. But since the $93,000 is a high salary, I went with 40%. And that adds another $37,200. So this higher would be $130,200. That leaves an additional $33,000 to be reduced, which is only really 0.022%, not 2.2%, 0.022%, which is, shouldn't be, create much sense. And I do have areas where I would, if you ask me, I could tell you where they go, where to look. So as far as the, as the, the MTS coordinator, let me, I lost my place here. So we're strongly suggesting putting that on hold. And as was pointed out, yes, the test scores have gone up. Wonderful. Wonderful. And it was, it was done without an MTS coordinator. It was done by the team of people we have here that did a great job. And mainly, to me, most of it was because they did hire the second literacy specialist and the math specialist. I would, I would say bravo to that. And they did their job getting those scores up. We kept on asking for a job description. It never came to us. They scored this without a job description. I guess they talked about the position. But when we asked for it, we couldn't get it to really help us out in understanding this. But that, so, so anyway, the, the average salary, I did my research, the average salary for, for this position is $58,000 in New Hampshire. No research was done on, to determine whether other elementary schools in the seacoast were using this type of a position. We were told within SAU 16, when I asked, the only ones were Exeter High School, Exeter Elementary Schools do have this. But, but this type of position doesn't exist in New Fields, Brentwood, Kensington, or East Kingston. Upon research, we also discovered that there are software products that are available. So it's offered by companies like Panorama that are also embedding artificial intelligence to help with the coordination task. This would be a, a, much more cost-effective than hiring another highly-paid middle-management person. We have very well-compensated teachers here. As a matter of fact, last year's budget, there were three people, professionals, that were over $100,000. And those were the principal, assistant principal, and the director of special education. This year's, if you go to page 179 in the green book that you just picked up, we now have 21 professionals that are making over $100,000 in the school. And I'm not saying that's not good or bad. I'm just saying, we have well-paid people, well-educated people, and we have a team of other professionals that can communicate with each other without need for somebody in the middle. And this is, my understanding is that this, there are 70 students that are in this tier two and three level that need most of the coordination, you know, out of the 526, this year would be 526 students, which is about 13% of the population. By the way, for the record, as was saying, was said, the services that they coordinate are provided by a social worker, two guidance counselors, one and a half, I think, from what the salary looks like, maybe one and a half psychologists, three speech therapists, a speech therapist assistant, two occupational therapists, a certified occupational therapist assistant, plus the three specialists that we had talked about, two literacy and one math specialist. These are all professionals that should be communicating with each other, which I think they are. When my son was, was here, he was in this building, the year it opened, in second grade, we got a call from the teacher. Your son will not-
I'm just gonna ask you to-
All right, I'll, I'll, I won't-
Focus on your amendment, please. Thank you.
I was trying to give a little-
Exhausted your three minutes and-
All right, let me finish. Let me leave with the conclusion then.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's hold off. Let's hold off on hiring another management-level position and research this year what other options are available. How we are handling the things now seem to be working. Once we hire a position, it will be difficult, after the fact, to say we actually did not need this position in the middle between the teachers, administration, and the specialist, instead of the more direct communication we have now. And as for the other $33,763, I can give you a list of areas to look to reduce that, and it will not be painful. So my concluding remark is, please vote yes on this amendment. This will result in still a very robust SMS budget that does not cut any existing programs. It does not cut any existing staff. It does, or any non-salary expenditures from the current budget. It continues to fund the collective bargaining agreement while giving the property taxpayers a pause in this, in the significant tax increases that they've had to endure the last two years. So thank you. And Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, I'm sorry. Mr. Moderator? I, I was going to ask for a roll call vote when we were done, but I'm, I'm going to yield to a voice vote. And if the voice vote is not certain, I will then ask for a, if you have trouble determining whether it was a yes or no, I will come up with a request for a roll call.
Fair enough. Thank you.
I mean, not a roll call, a ballot vote. Thank you.
Are there any questions or further debate on the amendment before us? This is on the amendment to amend the dollar amount of the operating budget in Article One. Yeah, and if anyone would like to speak, I would ask you to come to the microphone, please. And, thank you, Heidi.
Thank you, Dave. Heidi Hansen, resident of Stratum. I urge the voters here tonight to please vote no on this amendment. Excuse me, I have lost my voice, so I'm going to have to make this very brief. I'm sure that'll be appreciated. One thing that I really seized upon in Kate's presentation tonight was the number that here in, at SMS, 18% of the students receive some sort of interventions above and beyond typical classroom interventions. And what I can tell you is that 10 years ago, that number was 11%. It's an incre, it's an incredibly high increase of number of students in this school who need those interventions. And that's really what this position is all about. I would also like to point out that this administration has been very thoughtful around creating positions that are needed for specific tasks. And then once they've reached the goals of that task, they don't need the position anymore, and, and the position has gone away. So this idea that this position would be permanent, I reject that. And the evidence shows that that's just a false statement. So my voice is going to go away here. So I just urge everyone to please vote no on this amendment. The last time I checked, Mr. Abramey was not an educational specialist. But there are several dozens of people in this building.
Yeah.
There are several people in this building who are educational specialists, and they spent hours and days and weeks putting together this budget, along with people that are up here on the stage who vetted the proposal, and people in the community, the Finance Advisory Committee. I'm one of the members of that body who also vetted this process and this budget. And so I urge strongly everyone in this room to please vote no on the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. Pat, you have important information?
Yes. I just spent the last 10 years chairing the Industrial Engineering Advisory, Systems Engineering Advisory Board in the University of Buffalo, and being on the dean's advisory council for the whole engineering school. I know something about education. I spent my whole life telling people education is the most important thing. So to, to say that I know nothing about education is terribly wrong, and you should not have said that. And I hope that's retracted from the, from the minutes.
Thank you for the point of clarification, Pat. No, we don't- You guys, I don't appreciate that. We're going to be respectful, everybody. Pat and everyone else. Heidi, thank you. Pat, thank you for clarifying it. This is our meeting, and we will not, we will not do that. Thank you. Lionel.
My name is Paul Perrino. I live on 10 Haywick Drive. I am voting yes on Mr. Abramey's amendment. Last year, fiscal year 24, Stratum Memorial budget jumped 11 and 1/2%, over $1.5 million. And if the, and if the FY25 budget is approved at 4.1%, our costs will increase, operating costs for the SMS will increase by 21% over the last three fiscal years. We all felt the sting of the 11.7% tax increase last year. There's no pause from the SMS increase in funding requests, or so it seems. In FY24, a big increase for the teaching staff occurred. The average Stratum Elementary School teacher's salary increased to $88,500, the third highest in the state of New Hampshire. Their average benefit package is 48%. In contrast to the Department of Labor statistics for private sector, which is only 25%. So they're very well taken care of, very well compensated. And I'm not faulting this, this, this teachers. All I'm saying is, if you look at the 2023 U.S. News &amp; World Report, SMS was rated 86 out of 211 schools, okay, for proficiency. Now, I'm glad to see that the proficiency is coming up. And when, now, all I want to know is, when are we going to raise our English and math proficiency tests back into the 80s and high 70s, respectively, as they were when SMS was a top-rated school in the years before COVID? And why did we have to take, why did we have to hire three staff specialists to do this, when we were able to do it before that without the staff specialists? Are those people going to be full-time staff now for the next 18 years? If SMS passes that $15,425,249 budget with the 534 students, the Stratum cost, Stratum budget cost per pupil for FY25 will approximate 29,000 per pupil per year. The reported New Hampshire state average cost per pupil for FY24 was $24,756. And you can check that in the, in the New Hampshire DOE information. So we'll be paying additional money per pupil than the state average. Okay? It's obvious, or it's not obvious that we're getting a good return for the taxes we're levied for the education of our children. This generation is facing challenges that we never dreamed of in technology and in a competitive workplace. And that's why this education is so very important for them. However, this does not mean a blank check. The fundamentals to success of elementary education, our English literacy, literacy, and strong mathematics basics, basis, in addition to introduction to science and U.S. history and geography. SAU 16 and the SMS staff and school board should know that the residents can only bear so much. With the recent rising cost of our school system, Stratum residents are being forced to make hard decisions about whether this community can remain their home. Unfortunately, this may be just the tip of the iceberg on funding requests, from what I've heard at recent school board meetings.
Thank you, Paul.
Well, I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Pat Perrino, 10 Haywick Drive. I agree and support the amendment proposed by Patrick Abramey, and I hope everyone here will also. Since receiving last November's property tax bill, I've spoken with a lot of fellow Stratum neighbors and friends who are senior citizens like me. Many are retired on a fixed income, on a fixed income, and are being crippled by the property tax increases we face. These citizens are approaching the breaking point where they can no longer afford to live in their homes and are being taxed out of this community. I've spoken to people who had to forego their Christmas holiday and others who've had to dial down their heat and other necessities in order to pay unexpected, exorbitant tax increases. Many seniors I've spoken with wanted to be here tonight but couldn't due to night vision problems and other health issues, and are precluded from doing so. So their voices are not being heard here tonight. This is a big problem. Stratum has numerous over 55 HOA and condo housing developments. These developments bring in a great deal of tax revenue. The citizens living in them don't use the school system, don't get town plowing services, and even have to repair their own roads. This is also a big problem, yet they're being taxed through the roof. All Stratum citizens are now bearing the burden of a school budget that if tonight's proposed SMS budget is approved, as stands, amounts to a 21%, 21% increase in just three years for people on fixed incomes. I repeat, a 21% increase. As the people here today know, the school budget is responsible for the lion's share of property taxes we pay. With a major decline in enrollment, at one time, the enrollment here was over 700 students. Now we're down to five, low 500s for our student population in this school. And the budget should be a lot less because of that. But where are we making the cuts to reflect that? The amendment proposed tonight by Mr. Abramey begins to bring a critical relief to residents who simply cannot afford these excessive, fiscally irresponsible, ever-rising taxes. Let's please put the brakes on these backbreaking, ever-escalating property taxes and get fiscally responsible. Please make the voices of all Stratamites who are buckling under the strain of this tax burden and vote yes on this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Mary Adie. I live at 16 Kirkwall Drive. And I'm here to give my full support for the amendment that has been proposed by Mr. Abramey, excuse me, to contain the spending on the, the budget for Stratum Memorial School. We were pleased to see the 2023 proficiency rates in ELA in math, that they increased from 22, 2022 to 2023. And I think, as the, the principal said, and some of you had also mentioned, it's probably due to the addition of the ELA in math specialists to help students get caught up post-COVID. So that was an important step, and I'm glad that you did that. And it's good to see the results. I understand that further academic progress is projected for the general student body. So what you're doing, I think, is you're, you're in the, going in the right direction, and that's, that's a very encouraging thing to us who are citizens and voters in this town. For this reason, I believe that the addition of the requested MTSS position at $93,000 plus benefits should be put on pause until further, less expensive options for looking at student achievement and placement have been investigated. I think my friend in back of me here probably will give a little bit more detail on that, but I think it gives us a reason to say, we're on the right path. Let's hold off on, on adding this position to our, our school. Let's hold off on adding this position to our school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. And just to be clear, we're not, we're not changing positions. We're reducing the amount of the budget by approximately $163,000, just to keep us focused on, we're focused on a dollar amount to amend the budget, not positions or what they all do. It's not this body's job to say, cut this line, that we do not have that authority to do that, just to be clear, so we're all on the same page.
Hi. Connie O'Connell, 8 Haywick Drive. I also support Pat Abramey's amendment, and I don't want to reiterate everything that Pat said, but I just want to sort of summarize a couple of points that he did say. Number one, it appears that many of the MTSS functions are already being performed and have been performed for the last 18 months or more throughout the school. And that has resulted in improved student outcomes, mainly because of the addition of the reading specialist and the math specialist, which, all good things. I commend that. So it sort of begs the question, why do you need the MTSS coordinator if the job is already being done and you're already getting good results from it? Why not just continue the methodology that you're already using and actually also, as Pat mentioned, explore more thoroughly this MTSS AI software that's being used currently in over 1,000 school districts around the country? And as I'm reading your annual report about what you want the MTSS function to do, and I'm looking at the available data of what this software can do, it marries perfectly, and it would provide a perfect tool for the existing staff to use that to achieve the outcomes more efficiently and effectively. So therefore, the bottom line, and just to summarize, it sort of begs the question, how can the school board ask the Stratum taxpayer to fund this $130,000 position when, one, it appears to be overpriced, two, the job is being done by current staff with successful outcomes, three, it appears that complementary solutions, such as the use of specific MTSS software, have not been adequately explored to assist existing current staff? And finally, there's no written job description that has been shared with the public. So therefore, I propose that this position and the funding associated with it be eliminated from this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie.
I'm going to be really quick, because everyone stole my thunder. So, hi, I'm Jan Teed. I live at 2 Country Farm Road. I just want to appeal, first of all, it sounds like you guys have all done a lot of hard work, the board, to try to get this in the right direction, all the people in the school. So thank you. I just want to appeal that we cannot continue to see these tax increases. This is just unsustainable. And so I vote to support Pat Abramey's amendment to get this, start getting this under control, and then we work together to get it under control after that. It's just not sustainable, what we're doing. And one thing that jumped out at me at the presentation is, if the state of New Hampshire's schools are at 24,000 per student, and we're at 28, 29, we have a lot of work to do to get closer. Thank you.
Jan, thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Greg Richardson. I live at Point Rock Terrace in Stratum. I have no prepared remarks. I wasn't even going to come tonight, but I want to express disagreement with the proposal for a couple of reasons. I am a Stratum Memorial School parent. My son's in first grade, and he receives these services we're talking about. You know, he entered kindergarten, and we had no idea. And with the quick interventions of the kindergarten teacher, behavior specialist, et cetera, he was able to get on a right path very, very quickly. And I think it's really hard for people who don't have kids in the school system. I didn't know until two years ago what's actually happening. COVID has ruined these kids. They are socially challenged, and there's a real need to invest, to write them in a way to help them be in a position to really learn. And I think beyond just being a parent, I have a little bit of understanding of ROI, right? So I work in corporate finance, I have for almost 20 years. I moved here in 2018 for the school system. Since 2018, my house has appreciated like 62 percent. The investment we make in the schools is not just an investment in the kids who are here, it's an investment in all of us. It's the right thing to do, and also, it's going to position us to continue to accelerate what's already happening with the investments we've made to continue raising our school district's prestige, which in turn helps everybody in this room who is a homeowner. So I just want to really express on behalf of the parents that, you know, I consider myself to be pretty fiscally responsible, but to me, this seems like a little, a little step. I mean, quite frankly, we're talking about, if we use the math quickly in my head, somewhere in the order, a magnitude of $7 a month, the cost of a cup of coffee at Ginger Fox. I mean, this is what, this is very, very, very small, pennies on the dollar, for something that I can prove with, in my household, how it's working. So I'm pro-AI as well. I think that's something we should consider in the future, but in the short term, let's keep doing the right thing, and it is a small price to pay relative to the returns we're seeing in our property values and also just the betterment of our kids.
Thank you, Greg.
Hi, Patrick Quinn. I'm with, on Lamington Place in Stratum. This is actually our 20th year anniversary of living here in Stratum. Full disclosure, my kid's gone here, my wife works here currently. Full disclosure, I vote for Pat Abramey anytime he's on the ballot, and I will continue to do that. The taxes have doubled since we've been here 20 years ago, and our home value, as stated, have more than doubled. We moved here because of the school. Obviously, others have as well. I'm not saying that dropping the budget by $137,000 is going to ruin the school, but there's probably a reporter in here who's going to write a story about how Stratum voted down a school budget. And, you know, again, that's not the end-all and be-all of things. I don't think that's going to turn things around so desperately, but I did grow up in Massachusetts in a town called North Andover. When I was there, too, it was in the '70s and '80s, going to school, the people did move to this town in order to go to these schools. Proposition 2 1/2 came in Massachusetts, and some other problems with the superintendent really kind of drove the schools downward, and property values really went downhill. So that's what I don't want to see happen here. If you look at the value of homes, even if you've bought it over the last five, 10 years, there's been a significant appreciation, which makes the tax increase really seem like a pretty good investment. And so that's all I'd like to say right now. Thanks.
Thank you, Patrick.
Hi. My name is Kim Kerr. I live at 97 High Street. We had two children that are all grown up now and launched, and we pay $1,000 a month to live in Stratum, and I don't complain about that. But reading these numbers of what the schools are doing, I'm appalled, frankly. And as far as I am a businesswoman, not an educator, but my experience, when you put layers and layers of management, less and less gets done. I think it's a burden on the teachers. I think if you have competent teachers, a proper facility, and proper guidance, that you can survive without coordinators. So I'm frankly surprised you even have any. So yeah, I'm with Pat on, like, let's not hire this new one, and I'm questioning why we even have the others. If you have a proper math teacher, what do they need with a math coordinator? I don't understand it. I really don't. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Kim.
I am Bruce Phillips, 127 Bunker Hill Ave. For the record, I've never had a cup of Starbucks coffee in my life. And it's kind of how I think about a lot of things in life. I retired 14 years ago on a fixed income from an employer, and that hasn't gone up a dime in 14 years. I honestly will state that I think Mr. Abramey was kind to you, because if you asked me, I would tell you to hold your budget and figure out how to deal with it. Unfortunately, the world goes on like doctors offering you more pills and pills to fix things, but they never stop. They never stop you from taking the pills. So I would tell you to look at your school like that of, what do we keep adding to it? And if it's helping, for God's sake, do it. But if you're just adding something else and it's not doing anything, think twice. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
James Scammon, 96 Portsmouth Avenue. I've attended school district meeting here in Stratum for about 50 years now, and it used to be practice that overhead, like adding a new administrative position, was a separate article. To throw it in the budget creates this problem. I would urge you to consider putting, making it a separate article in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
My name is Mort Schmidt. I live at 3 College Road in Stratum, New Hampshire. I'm from this area. I attended third and fourth grade at the old school on Bunker Hill Avenue in the 1950s. I bought my house in 1978 and have been there for 46 years. Both my children have gone to SMS. They were in the original building, which is now the town offices, and my son went to the new school when it was built. My daughter and my son had a very great education. My daughter was a Rhodes Scholar finalist eventually after college. When I bought my house in 1978, my taxes were $498. There were over $8,000 last year. I know that there's inflation and all that, but the thing I have concerns about is that the budget has gone up 21 percent, but the number of students have gone down 20 percent. Why?
Thank you, Mort.
Hello, my name is Jeff Chason, 46 Bunker Hill Avenue. I'm here today, we moved here five years ago, mainly because of the school system, SAU 16 and Stratum Memorial, and we have two grandkids living next door to us who went through the whole COVID thing, and it was tough. And I know schools and things are just starting to recover, actually, and I think, I think the school here has done a really good job at that. My point is that somebody went through the budget, Pat, or some people from him, saw something, you know, what is this? You know, do we really need this position for that amount of money? There's no description of it. You've got the $93,000 plus the benefits on that. And I think that's what this is all about, the school committee, and we're all voters here. We're the legislature here, and we're the ones that vote, and it doesn't seem like that much of a, I think he said it was a 2% of the budget to be reduced for that. Let's put that aside and, you know, have, like I said, the schools and the school boards talk about it, see if that's something we really need, and I agree with that amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Seeing no other speakers. Mr. Abramey, if there are any other speakers in the House, I would invite you, I got you, Deborah. I'd invite you to queue up, so we keep things moving.
Pat Abramey again. I just want to reiterate that this hitting the 2% increase does not require cutting anything. It does not cut anything that exists today. So please, parents in the room, understand, we are not cutting teachers, we're not cutting support staff, we're not cutting any of that. And I also, the reason we went with the 2%, we also recognize, but there are things beyond, I think the principal was talking about it, beyond their control, okay? The contract, the new teacher contract call for this year having $72,000 more in raises. That's in contract. We can't change that, okay? I recognize things as small as food costs have gone up. I know we couldn't touch the food costs. So I could go on and on and on as to why, I said, you know, some of the people in the room wanted to go to zero. I said, no, no, I think a 2% is a reasonable compromise, and please, let's vote this and move on. By the way, I'm supporting the $40,000 of the, under three other warrant articles. I actually think that's a good idea, putting the $20,000, the $10,000, and the $10,000. And that's in my math. That's in the math that leads to the 2%. I added the $40,000 as part of the appropriation part of the MS 26 form. So I didn't even get to talk about the MS 26. You'd go crazy if I did.
No, you just stay on the amendment, Pat. Thank you.
I see my wife smiling. She knows.
Thank you, Pat. Deborah.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Deborah Altshuler from Apple Way. And I just want to clarify with you, Mr. Moderator, what the amendment actually says, because it seems like we got a little off track, talking about a particular position. And it's my understanding that, as a body, we are not empowered to zero out line items or make those decisions that are at the school, it is the school board's responsibility to make those line item decisions. Am I correct in that assumption?
Yes.
Okay. So with regards to the amendment, what is the number that is being asked to amend from the proposed $15,385,249?
Are you asking what the difference is?
Yes.
Yeah, I went to Stratum School, too, so I'm checking my math.
Awesome. Well done, sir.
And I was waiting for you to talk about Mrs. Peabody, 10 Bunker Hill Avenue, so I was with you up to that point. The amount that I have is $163,963. Do I, validated, verified? Thank you. So Deborah, the difference, this amendment will reduce the Stratum School District budget by $163,963.
Okay. And that $163,000, just as, it is my understanding that we have fixed costs that are bound by collective bargaining and by contracts that we already have in place. So that $163,000 is going to have to come out of some sort of other space in the budget for which this body cannot make that decision, correct? This is just a, let's take $163,000 off the top because we feel like it?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I want to clarify. Thank you.
Pat.
Just to clarify that, yes, $163,963. The only path to that, without cutting into bone now, existing programs, you would have to start cutting. If they did not put a hold on the position we're talking about, the MS, position, thank you, MTSS coordinator, they would have to find something else. And I don't think they're going to want to go and cut a teacher or anything like that. And then there's a little bit extra, another $33,000, that I think they can, they can find without a problem. And that's why we did it that way, because we know exactly what, what the senator said. We don't, we don't have the authority to line item dictate. I'm saying to the board, here's where I would look. This is what this says. Board, this is where, you know, if this passes, you have the job of now figuring out where you want to cut that $163,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. I think it's clear in the House, so everybody knows what we're speaking about. We're talking about $163,963. Nancy.
Nancy Hunter, Brown F. I'm calling the question. Thank you.
Well, Nancy, you are a lucky person. I don't see anyone else behind you, and I'm just going to keep moving along. The motion before us is to amend Article 1 to replace, to raise and appropriate the amount of $15,000, excuse me, $15,385,249,000 with to raise and appropriate the amount of $15,221,286,000. The motion was made by Pat Abramey and seconded by Connie O'Connell. We are finished questions in debate. We're going to vote, we're going to vote on this amendment at this time. The vote is, it's either a yes.
Can we get to respond to the comment, or no?
No, we're done debate, sorry. Wugges? Hey, hang on, you guys. Hang on, you guys. Stop. Crisscross applesauce. You're in SMS.
I was.
I was going to just keep moving forward. What are you thinking?
I mean, what's the board?
I think, I think the House is what the way the House is.
Okay.
Sorry, I, I did not mean to exclude the school board from tonight's debate. Madam Chair, if you, this is, it is appropriate. And I appreciate your being respectful to the House to hear what the House had to say.
Okay. Yeah, we'll respond.
Please.
We're going to have Jennifer speak, that wants to speak to something.
I think that's fair. I mean, I haven't been watching you guys.
Yeah. Thanks.
Can we consider later?
Yes, Jennifer.
So I'd like to talk a little bit about the MTSS Coordinator position. If you've been to our school board meetings, you know that the board, as a group, came up with a goal of really improving student performance, right? Like, that's why I joined the board. I have kids at SMS, and I was really worried post-COVID where they were going. And so we had a presentation on student data, and I'm sure if you guys saw it, you were as impressed as I was. There is so many data points that the administration looks at for each child in each grade in each classroom, right? It is intense. And what happens is, when you see the growth in those scores, it is because each child is evaluated and their data is considered. And then they are placed on a track. And that is what this person does, that is what the board goal was, and that is, we have shown real improvement in that. So this person coordinates the data and the movement of the kids through those various tools of support. It is a very important position. They're not just looking at, you know, an aggregate of data. They are looking at each child in each classroom.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Yeah.
At this point, we will move the vote on the amendment before us, to replace the language to raise and appropriate the amount of $15,385,249 with to raise and appropriate the amount of $15,221,286,000. All those in favor of the amendment before us, please say aye.
Aye!
Those opposed, nay.
Nay!
The ayes have it, the amendment has passed. Yeah, you can refrain, that's okay. Thank you. So that puts us back to Article 1 as amended, and I will write the new number in. And we are back to debate, questions and comments, discussion on Article 1, the operating budget. Pat.
Mr. Moderator, do we need to make a motion to accept the warrant article as amended? If yes, I'll make that motion.
Yeah, I don't think so. I think we're just going to vote on it as amended.
Okay. That's all I wanted to ask, thank you.
No, that's fair. Thank you, Pat.
We voted on the amendment, now we got to vote on the original article?
Yes, you are absolutely correct.
So we have to vote again?
We do, absolutely. Right now, we are in the question and comment portion of Article 1. We have not, we have, no, you're absolutely right. We have not voted on Article 1. And if there are any other questions or comments or debate before we vote on Article 1, this is the time to do it. Now, Mort, it's okay to keep me honest, I'm okay with that. Seeing no questions or comments. The motion before us, or the article before us, Article 1, the operating budget. Shall the Stratum School District vote to raise and appropriate the amount of $15,221,286 as amended for the support of the schools, for the payment of the salaries for the school district officials and agents, and for the payment of the statutory obligations of the district? This article does not include appropriations contained in special or individual articles addressed separately. The Stratum School Board recommends this appropriation.
I just want everybody to understand that that's the amended number, please, just in case there's any confusion.
Article 1 as amended. Thank you for keeping me honest, Pat, it's okay. We make sure we got the right number. No, no, no. Hey, I'm human like the rest of you guys, it's, I want to make sure we get this right. This is going to be right. We have no further questions or comments, we'll vote to move, or we will move the vote on Article 1 as amended. All those in favor of Article 1 as amended, please say aye.
Aye!
Those opposed, nay.
Nay!
The ayes have it. Article 1 passes. Pat.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider, and I want everybody to vote no. Vote no. I want to get this out of the way. We only have one bite at the apple in reconsideration, correct?
Are you voting, are you, is your motion?
I want a motion to reconsider the vote, and I'm suggesting to the body to vote no. So reconsideration will not be taken up if people leave.
Give me one second. I think, help me make sure that we're on the same page. You want to make a motion to restrict reconsideration so this does not come up again tonight.
Is that the way you do it here?
Yeah. I don't, what you just said to me was you wanted to reopen this article.
All right, we'll do it, we'll do it the way you do it, yes. Make a motion to, so it won't come up again tonight, yes.
Right. Just one second. So Pat, your motion is to restrict reconsideration so it doesn't come up again tonight?
Let me ask you this, can I make a motion to reconsider?
You can.
Am I allowed to make a motion to reconsider?
Yes.
That's the way I want to do.
Okay.
But I want the, but, but there's only one reconsideration vote allowed, correct?
You know, Pat, I haven't had somebody do that before, I mean.
Well, that's the way, okay, this is the way it's done in the House.
But let me just, let me, I want to make sure we're on the same, the same page. If you're open and to have a revote, a reconsideration of Article 1 is to ask this body to vote again on Article 1. And I heard you say you want to vote it down to fail the budget.
No, no.
Is that your intention?
No, 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 no. It's counterintuitive. I want to, I want to ask, because there's only one shot to, there's only one person to get up and reconsider a bill. So what, a bill, a warrant article. So what I'm saying is that I want to get that out of the way right now, not have somebody come back in a week if they want to. The way to do that is to ask for the vote to reconsider now, but I'm going to say ask the body to vote no. That means no, the no is not on the, on the warrant article, the no is on the, on the motion to reconsider.
I understand. I understand what you're asking me for. I don't understand the language you're using. You're saying you don't want this article to come up again tonight, is what your intent is.
[laughter]
Well, you guys, this is kind of a bric-a-doon deal. You guys, the Stratum School District comes together once a year, this is it. This is it.
We have legal counsel present who can tell us the laws on that.
We restrict.
Sorry, can I invite you to the mic, please? Thank you for.
Diane Garo, School District Counsel. The concept that's being proposed really doesn't apply to this meeting. If, you know, the meeting, as the moderator says, develops your rules, it doesn't matter how, you could have multiple motions to reconsider in the annual meeting, except if you have a motion to restrict reconsideration.
Which I think was your intent, Pat, but that's not the language you're using, and I'm trying to clarify for the body.
I will, I will yield to counsel, and I will make a motion to restrict, what was the words again?
Yeah, you got to restrict reconsideration.
Restrict reconsideration today, tonight, at this meeting. Period.
Can you explain what that means?
I'm happy to explain what that means. I have a motion.
[inaudible].
I know.
And this one, please vote yes.
You guys are killing me. I got a motion by Abramey. Who's the second? Do I, I'm sorry, I'm losing your, you're the guy in the House, I don't have your name right now.
Dan Shepard.
Dan Shepard, thank you, Dan.
Can you please explain what happens, whether it's voted yes or no, what the result of the vote would be?
Dan, I'm glad you asked that question. In the moderator's playbook, from the people that hand this down from the state of New Hampshire, to restrict reconsideration, we'll say, if it's going to come up again tonight, it won't be voted on tonight, it will be pushed down the road at least seven days. And this was an old New England town meeting type tactic, where we would vote on this article. Most of you people would go home to have dinner, the last 10 people would say, hey, we want to redo the budget now, and would all smoke cigars and redo the budget. What, sorry, I didn't say that in a public meeting, but what, what Pat's asked us to do to restrict reconsideration means it will not be voted on again tonight. And if the body decides they're going to reconsider the article, it will be publicly noticed for a date and time certain, at least seven days from now. Does that answer your question, Dan? Thank you.
Is there a way to make the vote so that it never comes up again for reconsidering until next year?
Yeah, you know, not that I'm aware of, because this is an annual meeting. I mean, we could call a special meeting to change the budget or something really weird, but this body doesn't meet again until next year. So this is, this is it for '24. We can talk about it again in '25. Yeah, well mechanically, that's, that's the way the RSA's work in the state of New Hampshire for a school district. It's just like a town, and we come together once a year for this purpose. But I'm not trying to be coy or cheeky, that's the deal. Tonight's the night, and to restrict reconsideration means it won't be voted on again tonight. Does that clarify, are there, everybody understand?
Yeah.
Okay. So a yes vote to restrict reconsideration will mean it will not be voted again then tonight. A no vote would mean we can bring it up six more times tonight. Okay. Yes, question?
Can we word it to say for fiscal year '24, rather than tonight?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that. Either you restrict it or you don't. I mean, that's not.
Like, if this body meets once a year, then, then we vote on it, and that's it until next year.
The better idea would be to vote on the other four articles and close the meeting, and then it's done.
Yeah!
I'm not trying to be coy, that would, that would achieve what we're trying to do. Once this meeting.
What's the concern? That it's going to get out, that we did this, and then people are going to, that's the point of the market? If people feel like.
Well, I'm sorry, yeah, oh, yeah, I can't, no, it's all good. It's okay to be passionate. Greg.
Greg.
Thank you. It's all good. Does everybody understand what we're doing? I, I just, I want it to be crystal clear, so you're all with me, we're all doing the same thing. Okay. The motion before us, made by Pat Abramey and seconded by Dan Shepard, was to restrict reconsideration for Article 1. All those in favor of restricting reconsideration for Article 1 as amended, please say aye.
Aye!
Those opposed?
No.
Nay.
That's close. The ayes have it. We've restricted reconsideration for Article 1, and we will not vote on that article again tonight. Thank you. And I appreciate the questions, because we got to all be on the same page. Article 2, the Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund. Shall the Stratum School District vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000 to be added to the Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund previously established in 2009? The sum to come from June 30 fund balance available for transfer on July 1. No additional amount to be raised by taxation. The school board recommends this appropriation, and a majority vote is required. Would anyone on the board like to speak on Article 2? Article 2 stands as presented. Are there any questions or debate on Article 2? Pat.
Oh, my goodness.
I just want to, I'm going to vote yes on this, I just want to know what's.
Tell everybody who you are getting, Pat, I know we know, but.
Pat Abramey, I'm top of the drive, thank you.
Thank you.
You know my address. I just want to know what the balance is right now in that fund? Do we know that?
The question is, what is the fund balance in the Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund?
$200,731.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Thank you, Pat. Are there any other questions or debate on Article 2? Seeing none, we'll vote on Article 2, the Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund. Shall the Stratum School District vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000 to be added to the Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund previously established in 2009? The sum to come from June 30 fund balance available for transfer on July 1. No additional amount to be raised from taxation. The school board recommends this appropriation. All those in favor of Article 2, please say aye.
Aye!
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article 2 passes. Article 3, the Special Education Expendable Trust Fund. Shall the Stratum School District vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 to be added to the Special Education Expendable Trust Fund previously established in 2009? The sum to come from the June 30 fund balance available for transfer on July 1. No amount of tax, no amount to be raised from taxation. The school board recommends this appropriation, and a majority vote is required. Would anyone from the board like to speak on Article 3?
I'll just say that the current fund balance is $488,300.
Thank you, Kate. Is there, are there any questions or debate on Article 3? Oh, my daughter's over there, she's quiet, nothing to debate. Okay. Dad. We'll move to vote on Article 3, the Special Education Expendable Trust Fund. Shall the Stratum School District vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 to be added to the Special Education Expendable Trust Fund previously established in 2009? The sum to come from the June 30 fund balance available for transfer on July 1. No amount to be raised from taxation. The school board recommends this appropriation. All those in favor of Article 3, please say aye.
Aye!
Those opposed, nay. Article 3 passes. Article 4, the Technology Trust Fund. Shall the Stratum School District vote to establish a Technology Capital Reserve Fund under the previous, excuse me, under the provisions of RSA 35:1 for anticipated technology expenses and to raise and appropriate $10,000 to be placed in this fund? The sum to come from the June 30 fund balance available for transfer on July 1. No additional amount to be raised from taxation. Further, to name the Stratum School Board as agents to expend from the fund. The Stratum School Board recommends the approval, and a majority vote is required. Would anyone on the board like to speak on Article 4? Are there any questions, or is there any debate on Article 4? Seeing none, we will move to vote on Article 4, the Technology Trust Fund. Shall the Stratum School District vote to establish a Technology Capital Reserve Fund under the provisions of RSA 35:1 for the unanticipated technology expenses and to raise and appropriate up to $10,000 to be placed in this fund? The sum is to come from the June 30 fund balance available for transfer on July 1. No additional amount to be raised through taxation. Further, to name the Stratum School Board as agents to expend from the fund. The Stratum School Board recommends, recommends approval. All those in favor of Article 4, please say aye.
Aye!
Those opposed, nay. Article 4 passes. Article 5, to hear reports of agents, auditors, committees, or officers herefore chosen and pass on any votes related thereto. Is there any other business or reports to come before the school district tonight?
Nope.
I'm seeing no's from the staff, the board. Anyone else business for tonight's school district meeting? Beautiful. Article 6, sorry. Transact any other business which may legally come before this meeting. I know I didn't take any action on 5, I don't, there was nothing to report. Is there any other business to come before us tonight for Article 6? I can't thank you enough for coming out tonight and participating in Stratum's democratic That sounds great, thank you, Beth. It's not frequent that we have this many people in attendance for this meeting. That was our deputy moderator, and she asked, in the most conservative or fiscally responsible...
Your top four, your top four, you're a bunch, you're a supervisor.
Well, this is, yeah, this is okay. They're asking if we will recycle our orange paper for the next meeting. I'd like to share with you, Thursday night is a meet the candidates night at the municipal center. Tuesday is election day, the polls are open from 7 to 7. And next Saturday, the 16th, is the town, annual town meeting, where we will take up the annual town budget.
Are we adjourned?
No, I'm still speaking, actually.
You're in order.
No, and I, I wasn't going to crisscross applesauce them twice in one night, because that might be too much. Bill, the guy, was that a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting? I got a motion from the guy who to adjourn, the second from Daniels. All those in favor of adjourned this evening's meeting?
Aye!
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.